Good, thank you, sir. Okay, Chris Logan.
Motion to recen- Be in an open session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to receive the Teamsters Union Fiscal Impact Statement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion to seal the executive session minutes pursuant to section forty-two, forty-six, seven Rhode Island General Law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Just needed to clean up some executive session stuff, so let's move on to the number two, the legislative agenda. Number two is the town's legislative concerns to be addressed at the twenty-twenty-six session of the General Assembly with the town's General Assembly delegation.
Motion to begin discussion regarding the town's legislative concerns to be addressed at the twenty-twenty-six session of the General Assembly with the town's General Assembly delegation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, thank you, and I want to thank our, our delegation for being here tonight. Um, just one person out at the table, Rick McCullough, our lobbyist is here tonight, too.
Yep.
Um, and, uh, he and I have been starting to work with ideas that you've presented over the past months to start to draft a legislative agenda for you, which has been shared before this meeting. Um, just before I, I turn it over to the delegation, I just, I wanted to point or hi- you know, two things that happened last year, which are important. Um, we were very successful in getting the hotel tax increase last year by one percent. Uh, it's a significant, uh, new revenue source for the town of Middletown on a non-tax basis. It's, it's probably near a million dollars a year. Um, which would not have been possible without the support of our delegation, so uh, I wanted to highlight that. That was something the councils asked for over the past couple of years. Um, and I just also highlight with it that the delegation was also, um, although not a direct ask of ours, but we asked them to support it, was a change in legislation that would capture, uh, fees from short-term rentals, um, that weren't paying the, uh, the hotel tax. So that also contributed to our our revenue streams. Uh, the second piece of legislation that you requested that we successfully had adopted was related to the split tax rate amendments to that law. Uh, and again, with assistance from the delegation, we were able to get that through the General Assembly and adopted so that we could get the tax bills, so. Um, a very successful session. Um, and we couldn't, we couldn't ask for, for better help up, up at the State House. Um, so with that, I'm not sure if, if Lou as the, the senior statesman from the Senate is gonna start the discussion, but I'll, I'll turn it over to them.
Yeah, I'd just introduce him. We have, uh, uh, State Senator Lou DePalma, and our State Rep Terry Courtfriend, and our State Rep Alex Finkelmann. So, welcome. We appreciate what you do for us, and part of this process is, we talk about things that's important to us, and we hand that over to you, and hopefully you can make that happen. Sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't, sometimes it happens quicker than we think it's gonna happen, which is always a pleasant surprise, and sometimes it takes a lot longer than we, we expect, which kind of annoys everybody, but including yourself, so I'm sure. But that's just, that's just government, and that's part of the process, and we have Rick in the, in the background there that's lobbying for us and doing a lot of background work, um, behind the scenes as well, so we appreciate you. Okay, Senator.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief, and it's, uh, I know we have several items to address, but just a summary, it's great to work with my, uh, two colleagues here, Rep Cortrin, Rep Finkelmann, and, uh, Rep Abney, who couldn't be here tonight as well, uh, who, he and I have many different conversations once April begins and through June on, on the budget, meaning on a very regular basis, but as Sean has indicated, uh, the ability to increase the local hotel tax by one percent, which is a big deal. We all know, Mr. President, you know how many times, even going back when I think I was on the council, looking at, what can we do? It got done. Got done because, for two reasons. I think in two reasons only. One, well, three. One, the delegation being behind it and pushing it. Number two, the town supporting it and saying we need to do it, and getting others to support it as well. And you mentioned the work of the Mayfork Group and Rick McCullough. Rick is there all the time. So be, the ability to have someone to have a conversation on a regular basis. We're there all the time as well, but the ability for someone to have a conversation with leadership, with others, other General Assembly members, just like we do, is invaluable. It's priceless with regards to the ability to have that voice being, speaking to articulate what we're trying to accomplish. This one percent's gonna do, Middletown will do well. You'll see a sheet, we're not gonna go through the numbers here, so you'll be able to see what the increase in the hotel tax will bring, some other things as it relates to the tangible tax, the car tax amongst other things, that will help Rhode Island residents, Middletown residents, and it's not gonna come out of their, as part of their property tax. Where a car tax used to come out of, the tangible tax for business, and clearly, the hotel tax, while it might affect some Middletowners, if they're staying in a hotel, or whatever, family, for the most part, these are folks that are coming to the area to benefit from it, so. I'll leave that there. We'll look forward to another General Assembly session in twenty-twenty-six, but I do want to preface it with one item. Uh, having read the entire one big beautiful bill, every word, every line, uh, in that bill, we have some serious headwinds we're facing as a state, the whole country does, in the area of health and human services, amongst other things that's impacting those. Does it have some benefits to some cities and towns and citizens? Yes. Does it impact cities, I mean, states with regards to this? Yes. One fact, then I'll turn it over to Rep Cortrin and Rep Finkelmann. Just looking at the impact to health and human services across the country over ten years. Medicaid, SNAP, Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, we're all familiar with, predominantly Medicaid. Those two numbers, those two areas, over ten years, impacts one trillion dollars. One trillion dollars over ten years, over the entire country. One trillion. Rhode Island has last numbers, they give them every month, about three-hundred-and-three-thousand individuals on Medicaid. Current number of folks, one-third of our populations on Medicaid. A hundred-and-forty-four thousand folks, I think, are on SNAP benefits. It's a headwind we're gonna have to face. We've already had, having a little foresight in the budget, we asked the agencies that are responsible for this to put together, to do the analysis, and come back with some options of what we can do, what we should, not what we should do, what we can do, what the impact it is. We've already had those, I know on the Senate side, we've had those meetings, those reports are out. The governor will be using those as he goes forward in preparing his budget for twenty-two, FY twenty-twenty-seven. One last piece. Revenues are up. Expected to be up for twenty-twenty-seven, and our caseloads. Between those two numbers, we have some significant, uh, numbers to the positive, as it relates to the economic, uh, clearly driven by income tax for the most part, being up. Clearly, the Medicaid side driving some of those down. So, we'll be addressing those, we are addressing some of those already, uh, but that's gonna be a serious area to address as part of the F, beginning in FY twenty-seven, but the numbers really don't, the impacts really don't happen until one might expect after the next presidential election.
Okay, well, he pretty much summed it up. Um, I'm happy to be here tonight. I look forward to going over these, um, priorities, your priorities, and looking forward to hearing from you all. And, um, I am wondering if you could share a little bit about where the discussions with, uh, Newport and, uh, Middletown are on the, I'm trying to keep, um, informed about what, what you're thinking on the regionalization and how those discussions, I know you had the meeting at your public meeting that you were gonna have a discussion with Newport, but I was wondering what the timing was of that. Are you able to share that with us?
Yes, so, um, looks like right now it's a, a date of December eighth. Um, we tried to meet, uh, this week. Uh, we've been trying to work on dates for about three weeks now, and with everyone's schedule, some councils travel on both sides of the, uh, both the city and, and the town. Um, the schedules really didn't line up, so it looks like right now it's December eighth. It's not concrete. Um, we'll, we should sum it up here by the end of the week, for sure. It'll be at the, um, Newport has arranged it to be, they, they expect a lot of people to be there, and they needed a three-to-four-hundred-room, uh, venue, so it looks like it's gonna be at the, uh, at the Wyndham.
And it's, so that'll be a public meeting, then?
It's public meeting.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I had, I'd heard that it might be executive session, so I'm glad you clarified that. And, um, uh, I'm here to listen to what you all want and look forward to supporting your efforts, whatever they may be. And we have the, we have the list.
Thank you. How you doing, Alex?
Uh, uh, thank you, good to see everyone. Um, I, I'm just more gonna reiterate, uh, what the Senator, uh, spoke about. Uh, similar to last year, um, our budget is going to be a difficult year, um, yet again. Um, the, it's hundreds of millions of dollars deficit going into this year. Uh, I, I appreciate the, um, notes of the legislative priorities for the upcoming year. Some are certainly gonna be doable, others are gonna be a challenge, because money's a challenge. Uh, I, I know my goal, our goal, is to do everything we can to be creative, to maintain, um, all critical services while hopefully me, uh, minimizing any burden on any taxpayer, certainly in Middletown and throughout the state, so we're gonna work together. Um, and I look forward to hearing from you guys about these priorities, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Alex. Okay, so, the first one on the list is the, uh, the library?
Yeah, do you want me to run down that?
Absolutely.
So, uh, just so everyone understands, so these are items I captured from discussions and meetings with the council. They, they ultimately need to go back and prioritize this list, but I think it's, I think it speaks for itself in many ways. Um, we're currently in process of, of renovating One Ten Enterprise for the library. And the issue we've run into is that the reimbursement rates from OLS were last, uh, updated in two thousand and seventeen, so they are dated, and they are pre-COVID. Uh, a little over a year ago, Rick and I met with the, uh, OLS, uh, not the, the lot, the State Board of Trustees, Library Board of Trustees, and we were told they would update the, uh, the reimbursement rates. After a year, they came back and said they would take another year to reimburse us, uh, to update those rates. So, what we're looking for is some piece of legislation that will allow us to, um, capture those rates, because, because we're gonna start construction, and it sounds like we're gonna get done before the time they actually, you know, come up with the new rate. So, we'd like to be able to capture those savings and not be penalized, uh, because OLS is, um, not efficiently addressing that, that one issue. That, that probably is one of our, our biggest ask of this legislative session. Uh, something that came out of a meeting, at our last meeting, uh, with our Tax Advisory Committee, is that the council is interested in expanding the veteran tax exemptions for all Middletown veterans who are honorably discharged. Um, that's not uncommon with other communities in the state. In Middletown currently, we have categories that people fall into, which is also not uncommon, but the, the council's looking for a, a more inclusive, uh, statute, so, uh, and that will require enrolling legislation. Special education funding, and I believe, uh, Terry put this, uh, bill in for the school committee last year, is, uh, establishing a new high-cost special ed education fund to pool resources, generate income to support, uh, cost, excess costs associated with, uh, students that have very high needs, uh, from a dollar standpoint. Uh, and there was a House Bill sixty-three-twenty-five that was introduced last year, and, uh, talking with the superintendent and the school committee chair, we would like to continue to pursue that uh, as something that's important to us. Uh, the superintendent has identified, again, it was, there were bills that were introduced last year, Senate Bill nine, ninety, nine-seventy-two, and House Bill six-two-three-six, which increase the number of regions, um, that addressed, uh, busing from, uh, for out-of-district students that, you know, basically through that program, uh, greater efficiency and cost savings. Uh, but we do, just like all communities throughout the state, have, um, busing challenges with the way the system is currently set up. Uh, so we're looking for your support in continuing to pursue, um, how that uh, network works a, across all communities in the state in hopes that we will reduce cost. Uh, one of the issues that the council has brought up is, is speed, the pe- the speed, the rate of speed that people travel uh, within the town of Middletown. Um, we started to implement, uh, cameras in school zones. Uh, once we get past some of the red tape at DRT, we'll start looking at red light cameras, but the other area that we were looking to expand is speed cameras in areas outside of school zones. Um, and I think primarily based on the feedback and complaints I get, we're looking at areas that feed Second Beach. Um, basically, as we get out of season, um, we end up with a tremendous amount of traffic. Um, as people make their way down, um, it's the east-west corridors, Forest Avenue, Elephant Lane, and then it's those direct lines down to the, the beaches, uh, Berkeley Paradise, Green and Avenue, um, Mitchell's Lane, basically, everybody, whatever ways is telling them to get there the quickest. Um, they not only get there the quickest because of the shortcut, but also because they're traveling very quickly through our residential areas, so. I think, and I've talked to Rick about this, I think we're thinking, there's two ways to approach this, is either statewide, is expand the definition, or look for, look for Middletown-specific legislation that the General Assembly could, um, approve. Uh, and talking to the police chief, he had some ideas on how we could set up some criteria based on traffic volume, average speed, things like that, that, you know, if we can identify that criteria, then reasonably, uh, even if it's Middletown-specific, we could, we could apply for those, those exceptions. Um, the sixth item, last year, we had applied for reimbursement for our emergency shelter, um, at the, uh, new middle, uh, high school. And the council was able to pull some money together, about a half-million dollars to pay for that. However, that money was earmarked for other stuff, and, and we still feel strongly that this is a, a regional asset, and it shouldn't just be something that people in the town of Middletown should pay for, so. Um, there was a bill introduced last year to, uh, have that funded through REMA or, or some emergency response area. Um, and since the project's ongoing, we're just looking to reintroduce that bill, um, so that, that original half-million dollars can go back to the other capital projects that we had envisioned for the community. Uh, an issue that we've brought up annually for a number of years now is the pilot program, Payment in lieu of Taxes. Uh, the, the state has a pool of money that it appropriates to communities for uh, properties that, that don't pay taxes, like hospitals and, and state properties, things like that. Uh, but Middletown actually is the host of Naval Station Newport, and it is actually one of the largest non-taxpayers in the state of Rhode Island. Uh, sailors that come here, and we're glad that we're here, but it does place an undue burden on the town of Middletown in the sense that uh, they are using municipal resources without, uh, necessarily making a contribution to, to the library, or to the roads, or, or things like that. Um, there has been legislation introduced over the past couple of years with, from other communities looking to expand the definition. Um, and we would like to be considered, um, as part of that relook, and, and be considered, uh, you know, eligible for some of the monies that are appropriated by the state. So those are, those are some of the big, those are the legislative items that I have on the list, and I'm, again, at a, at a later date, when the council has the time to digest this more, they may have some more, but I think those are the seven items, and, and I, when I say the seven, I also uh, respectfully appreciate that each of you only get so many items that you get to submit to the General Assembly, um, and you have other constituents, it's not like we're just the only ones, so. We'll do a good job of organizing these and prioritizing where we need help and work with you to see who can, can help us with the, uh, the number of ask you have, so. Um, in the support category, we have four items right now. Um, the first is related to NOAA and the Coast Guard relocating personnel here over the next, uh, upcoming three, four years. Uh, so we have two-hundred families coming from NOAA, thirteen-hundred families, service members coming with the Coast Guard. Um, we have a, a regional housing challenge. Um, and, and that not only is housing units itself, but also communities, and one of the biggest barriers is infrastructure. Um, we worked with, uh, Deb Goddard, I've been in touch with her, and we actually hosted sort of a summit here in Middletown. Uh, we convened all of the communities within a, a thirty-mile radius uh, to talk about this challenge and come up with some ideas, um, on how we can sort of spur interest in developing housing, so, so one of the easy ones, and it's the Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns, is gonna help, um, get housing contractors together at some sort of a a get-together to talk about the housing needs, so they can identify where, you know, they can see what the, the build rate should be, um, where there's some opportunity. Uh, but we also, we also need money for planning and capital, just locally here in Aquinic Island, because uh, the reality is, and just having that in the army, um, if you're a coastie and you're here and you have to be in a formation at six in the morning, uh, you don't want a fifty-minute ride from somewhere to get here to, you know, do your physical fitness training, then go to work for the day and then have to drive home. They're gonna wanna be close to Naval Station Newport. And, um, I think from the town of Middletown, and I would imagine, and I, I can't disimagine, uh, where, where my two colleagues in Port Spur, the Newport, are also veterans of the Navy. Um, we, we want those sailors, coasties, civilians to be successful. We want Naval Station Newport to be successful for our our local and, and state economy, so we really need a lot of help there. Um, affordable housing, um, one of the projects, problems that we're, we're running into, we, we have projects that we've identified that the town wants to pursue. Um, the tax credits sort of focus on, you know, they, they favor communities that have mill buildings that they have, or, or buildings that could be retrofitted. Um, and whether, we, we don't really have that in Middletown. We don't have mill buildings, and we don't necessarily, you know, a lot of what we would consider as new construction, so. Uh, the council president has talked, um, a lot about trying to see if there can be some sort of other category, a pool of funding set aside where, for suburban rural communities, um, there's a pot of money available, and, and it's not necessarily to achieve density, but, but to at least respect that we're not gonna achieve urban-level d- d- density uh, that upsets the character of, of our, of our communities, so, uh, that, that is something that we're looking for. Um, we have a number of STIP projects. Um, we would be looking for help to try to accelerate those timelines in some way. Uh, probably the big one is our Lower Aquinic Avenue, uh, paving and sidewalks and streetscapes projects. Uh, we've been working on those, and in fact, the town has funded the engineering, uh, for those projects. Uh, they still, though, the way DOT budgets these are, are years out. Uh, so, as those designs are gonna be finalized here, probably in, in, you know, weeks, not months, um, we would be coming to you to help lean in on the Department of Transportation to see if there's cash flow that they can accelerate towards those projects so that we can get them done, and not have those plans sit on the shelf for three, four, five years. Um, and then lastly, there are a number of programs that the governor and the legislature has funded. Um, after-school program, uh, the Learn Three-Six-Five program is a funding stream associated with that. Um, we've been able to work with the school department to put in some very good programs, and it's been a good partnership between the town and the schools. Um, whatever flavor, name, or whatever we wanna call it, um, we, we really just want the money. Um, and I, I'll just be sincere in saying that, um, because it is making a difference for, uh, the students, and, um, not only for the kids that have a, a real need, but also from an enrichment standpoint. Uh, the municipal road program has been great. Um, one of the things I talked to Director Alvedi about is, they, they always, they, there's a set, there's a set amount of money that everybody gets based on a formula. I don't think anyone's gone out and asked everybody, like, how much money could you batch? Like, how much more money can you get there? And I think there would be a bang for the state's buck, because I think there's community like Middletown that we set aside quite a bit of money. I think this year we've set aside, you know, and I can say it, in the, the CIP, which the council will get in, in probably a week or two, we set aside one-point-three-million dollars as pay-go money. So, like, we're ready to match, and I, you know, and I don't think we're the only one, but we have roads that we wanna maintain. Um, from the state standpoint, you know, it's, it's sort of like the, the guarantee money you get, you know, if, if I can put in whatever, you guys put some money in, we get some happy business and residents, so, um, we definitely would like to see more road money. Um, there's a small, fun, resilient roadie infrastructure fund, um, money that you guys have pledged that if we match it, we can do some resiliency projects. We have the coastline. Um, we have issues that we have to deal with there. And then lastly, there's a Main Street Rhode Island Streetscape Improvement Fund. And again, you know, and you'll, you'll see in the upcoming weeks, um, if you haven't looked at it already, our Lower Aquinic Avenue project is a good example. Um, we're working hard to try to improve, uh, the aesthetics of the town of Middletown in many ways, so. I think that Streetscape program is another one where there's, you know, you put in fifty cents, and we put in fifty cents, or whatever the ratio is, but there's a, there's a big bang for the buck. Um, and that, you know, and that goes with, like, I think every partnership, the, the, you know, as we work together, um, you know, it just, it just makes a, it makes for an improved, more dynamic community. Um, and, and especially with a town, like the town of Middletown, supporting Naval Station Newport and tourism. You know, those are dollars that we not only benefit from locally, but, but also the state benefits, and, you know, everyone in the state, you know, shares in that success, so. Um, those are the items legislatively and from a support standpoint that, that I've identified for tonight's discussion, again, based on uh, what I've heard from the council. I'm sure they have some other ideas that they wanna discuss tonight, maybe. But, um, this is our, our, I think, a very strong starting point, and I would, you know, like all things, I think we're probably eighty percent to where, where we'd wanna be in discussing what our priorities are.
Hey, Sean, could you just speak a little bit about the library reimbursement rate, what it is currently and what?
So it's a, it's a, it's a renovation project, uh, so it's basically set at a, uh, an amount of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a square foot. Um, again, uh, I don't know what the right answer is. They're supposed to go through a process where they look at similar projects regionally to figure out what the construction cost is, but but I know two-hundred-and-fifty dollars in two thousand and seventeen, it's, it's increased drastically. Um, you know, I, Newport saw that, you know, just pre-COVID, post-COVID, when they were building Rogers High School. Um, we were lucky enough that we had a little bit of distance from COVID, that we were able to price our school project and not run into that problem. Um, our library project is on time and on budget, but we wanna make sure that the reimbursement that should be due to the, to the Middletown taxpayers is actually recognized. Uh, and again, like I said, with, we, we went back two years ago to the library, uh, board at the state level. They, they didn't have a problem looking at it. I, I think, in, in fairness, their biggest challenge is that uh, the federal government has cut their budget in half, um, the federal dollars that came in, so that, that is a chat, you know, whereas, so for Ride, when all of those applications came in for school projects, they had a budget where they could afford to have some consultants come in and help them adjudicate, uh, reimbursement applications, right, you know, the library doesn't seem to have that capability. Um, and that may be the case where getting the governor's office involved to, to give them a, a little bit of a push, a little bit of resources to get that new number. Uh, it's certainly not gonna go down, um, but what we're looking for is something that's updated and fair. Um, so that, that's, that's what that request is based on.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Any councils have any questions or comments about, or, or maybe a different uh, agenda item that you'd like to discuss? I think, uh, the, the library one is important, because that's one that's, we're moving on, and that's important, those dollars are important. Um, you know, and anything that we can realize, why not? So I think, I think that's important for us. The, uh, the special education is really, uh, funding is really important, too, because uh, that's a huge, uh, line under in the budget. And so, any help with the, with special education is, is critical, as well as transportation. I know, uh, in talking with, uh, with our neighbors of the south in Newport about these regionalization talks, some of the re- savings you could potentially realize from regionalization just in transportation between both communities is substantial. I mean, and you compound that over five or ten, twenty years, you know, you, you're talking about thirty, forty, fifty million dollars. I mean, you can never generate that in revenue in that amount of time, so that, that's, 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 that's important as well. Um, and as far as the speed, the speed cameras go, uh, Mr. I look, I look at Mr. Viveras, because he had brought that up a while back. Um, and so, um, I think it's important that just, that, that gets expanded. A lot of other communities, some of other communities, I think Providence does it, I think, and, and, uh, and it's not an I got you, it's just more of a, uh, you know, the process that we've implemented with the school zones, it's, it's, you're getting some warnings along the way, and New, I know Newport has done it on Alamo-Calfus Road, and everybody's complaining about it. Um, but if it's complaining, that means it's working. Um, because it's starting to slow people down, and you hear everybody saying, well, I'll go a different way now. So maybe they speed somewhere else, but I don't know, but, um, with our main roads, especially with our main road about to be paved here shortly, um, you know, I think that's gonna become a racetrack, and that's not the reason to do this, it's just, it's more of a safety reason all over town, and you just don't have the resources to. To control speeding like you'd be able to. Not like the old days where you could do it. It's very, very difficult now with the, with the amount of resources that it takes.
Can I just say one thing to support that? So when I was talking to the chief this morning and we were talking about the need to put him down by the beaches. In the summer, so we, police officers don't take vacation in the summer. But the hours and resources are down to just deal with the volume of tourists that we get. So. To take, there's just no resources to do a lot of this, you know, traffic enforcement, traffic calming work. We just don't have enough and. The cameras, besides from a safety standpoint, do provide at least some control that we can otherwise achieve on a seasonal basis.
Yeah. And it's not really, at least in my opinion, and I'm sure the people, some people say, yeah, right. It's not really a money grab. It's a safety issue. The money's just a consequence of, of trying to, trying to make your road safer. So. And again, the warnings will be there if this, this happens, but the same thing we're doing with our school zones. So that's important. One thing on the support item that Sean mentioned was affordable housing. And that's critical because of. Obviously, it's, it's need for every community throughout the country, never mind just the state. And we're trying to make some inroads there between ourselves and some of the private stuff that's going on here. But we can't provide enough for our own folks, never mind the folks that are coming. So it's important that, and it shouldn't all just be on Middletown. It just, it should not. And I know it's not, and Newport's trying to do some stuff and I'm sure Portsmouth is as well. But I'd spoken to, Lou, I've spoken to you about it a few times. I spoke to the speaker Sarkachi at a function I saw him at this summer. And, you know, he said, well, you know, what's going on in Middletown and how can we help? And I said, well. You know, one of, one of the reasons we, we voted down the Berkeley Peckham, Oliphant Lane, Oliphant School rather. Housing proposal from Penrose was that, you know, we didn't get the money from the state because it was a density issue. You wanna go up to three floors. We don't wanna, we don't want the state to say, okay, you know, we, you know, your community needs to look like this if you want this. And we don't, we don't think that's right. We wanna, we want it to fit our community. So why not come up with a couple of parts, different parts of money? Is, we can't compete with. With the Cransons, the Walwicks, the Provenances, the Woon Sockets that have these bigger buildings. You know, we need to be able to compete with the Narragansett, you know, the East Grenages, the North Kingstown, the Portsmouth and the Newport's of the world. So that I think that if the money's there, it should kind of be, be broken out a little bit more based on. Population or what's going on in that particular town, especially with, you know, the amount of families we're about to see. Never mind the fact that the families, we can't take care of our own as far as housing. So I think that's important as well. And when I explained that to the speaker, you know, I don't, I don't believe it was lip service. He said, you're right, we need to fix that. So. I think that's, that's a critical one as well. So. That's my two cents for the night. I think we can adjourn at this point. Just kidding. But any other councils have any? Lou, yes, sir. Yes.
Sean, with regards to the STIP projects. Having tracking those pretty closely, knowing that East Main Road is getting done, which is doing well. I think West Main is next year, I believe. With regards to the timeline, I know DOT through Meredith Pickering in statewide planning had asked for. The town to provide a priority. Were these in there? And that's how they ended up in the most recent version? Or were they not on the list? From the town? All right. Let me put it this way. Whatever it is, can you get us, was there a memo sent to DOT? I think Director Alvedi came down at some point?
So the STIP window opened up last year and we were able to submit five new projects with a justification for each. On this list here. The Streetscapes project fifty three oh seven is a new project that we submitted.
Okay.
And actually, and I will get you the letter. You have a copy of the letter. I had sent it into comments to DOT. There's a disconnect in years between the Lower Quinick Avenue paving and sidewalks project. And then the design and, and then, and then the Streetscapes project. They don't, they don't align in the. The STIP so that they're done concurrently. So I will get you that, but.
I've looked at the. That again, I commented on, I sent a comment in this year, clearly on the shared use pass stuff that was in there that they had moved out like four more years. So it was like eight or nine years from now, which was. Unacceptable. So I moved it back. So it didn't get anywhere other than where it was before. So if you can get that list.
So like two projects that were important to the council was, one is Oliphant Lane. You know, a heavily traveled east-west cut through, you know, just, just, you know, for Terry, like, like Union Avenue, these are, these are busy, busy roads and they don't have the right infrastructure on them. I think that got submitted and I think it's, it's there for twenty thirty-two, which is ridiculous. Paradise Avenue, which was identified as important during COVID because of the number of people that walked down. It's narrow. The traffic volume is crazy. The council and it's, it's split on this idea is the, a roundabout at Paradise Valley, but then. Redoing the road so that it can handle the traffic as well as having something where people can walk on it or, or use bicycles, some sort of mixed use ability. That's another one that's out, you know, twenty thirty-two. So I'll.
If we can, maybe, maybe we'll just follow up with that.
Yeah.
The list to say, this is what we want the priorities to be. And, and. We also, as part of the budget, we took some heat for it. Because all of our road work, all the road work projects, for the most part, that have a federal match. So all of our projects that have federal match and the most of them do, that are state roads, eighty percent from the federal government, twenty percent from the state. That's a pretty good deal if you can get it. If I can put in a dollar and you put in four, I'll take that any day of the week, right? Well, what we did this year because we wanted to ensure that the work got done and some of this had been done in some time. Was, we all saw, I'm paying for it with regards to increase in your driver's license fees. Modest. Same thing with vehicle registration fees, some modest fees there to pay for this. Prior to what we did in Roadworks in twenty seventeen, twenty fourteen, twenty seventeen, a timeframe, I think it was. We would go off the bond every two years. We would go off the bond for eighty million dollars. Over twenty years, we would pay back a hundred and twenty million dollars. Eighty, hundred and twenty.
Look, what it costs to make pennies, Lou, that's what it sounds like.
There you go. By the way, when's the last time you saw something on the ballot for a bond? Doesn't exist anymore. Why? We're paying as you go. So we're saving that money, that eighty, that forty million dollars that who would have paid for it? All taxpayers would have paid for it, coming out of the gas tax, et cetera. That now, or vehicle inspection fees, registration fees, license fees. Not coming, we're not going to the bank tomorrow to say, we, we've done it a couple of times when Senator Reed or White House or Congressman Cicilline. Or Amo and Magaziner and the Landman were there, where the six-ten connector, they got us three, two hundred and fifty million dollars. That's not in the budget. We gotta go find fifty percent, twenty percent to match that. So we had to go find fifty million dollars somewhere. So we did have some of those bonds. So. We will work to try and figure that out. But Sean, one last question, I think, on the. The camera piece. So I was thinking whether in your conversations with Newport, whether it's restricted only to local roads. And I answered the question myself because the one that's on. Alamo Calphus is a state road.
Right, but the way it, no, but so as I understand it, they were able to locate it there because they've associated it with the Pell School.
Anything within a quarter mile of a school hall is defined as a school.
So in the case of Middletown High School. If you wanted one there.
I can, and we have an application in the DOT. It's there.
I'm not saying you should or shouldn't, but I'm just.
If I wanted to put one, you know, I guess I could put one within whatever that distance of St. George's, but.
They have, right?
There's one in front of the school, but I could put one on Paradise Avenue because I'm within that distance. It just. Okay. But I just wanted, under the spirit of statute, I don't, I don't think it's, it's, you know, a genuine. Okay. I don't, I don't think it's.
It's a school certain distance on a state road, but otherwise, so it could also be on Aquinick Avenue where God is.
Yes.
But, but for the school, you couldn't do it by Rhode Island general law.
Exactly.
Yep. And I think the only last question I had for you here was the, I had one more on the. Oh, I know what it was. And there were a couple. It was the last one though, with regards, I was thinking here with regards to the library construction. And I don't know if it's the potential dilemma we have. We can write it such that. Projects which began after July, whatever, July first, twenty twenty-five would be eligible. So you have a date. So it's not just Middletown, anyone who's done something in this calendar, in this fiscal year. Or we pick a date whenever it is and we get the legislation, legislation put in. It's gonna, it's a budgetary item. So it's something, something that needs going into the budget. But other cities and towns would benefit from it as well with regards to the reimbursement rate being instead of the two hundred and fifty dollars per square foot. In twenty seventeen, what should it be today? We would caveat it by saying, as opposed to just a date. Where the budget gets put in place of July first, twenty twenty-six. It would be for projects that began. After July first of twenty twenty-five, if that's the right date, whatever the right date we want is. So I think that that would be a way to address that. To make certain it happens. So Middletown's work on the new library would be able to be included. So. Or complete, right, or like we did with schools, or completed by such and such a date. I think it's the case where we probably had to go forward because it would be the rate. Going forward from there, unlike the housing rate for schools, which was a certain period of time, because those rates are coming back down, will come back down. So, okay. Thank you.
One last thing for myself is that I mentioned the. The, as far as education goes, the special education funding, the transportation. Funding and out of district funding and also. One that Sean mentioned, but I'd like to just highlight a little more is the, is the Learn Three Sixty Five program or whatever you wanna call it. That's what we had, we had the governor down here before he was the governor. He was lieutenant governor. And he started this program in Cumberland. And it seemed to be somewhat successful. So I would just like to, I think that's important. To let you guys know that the, with the appointment of our new superintendent in a year and a half. The, the educational culture here in Middletown has changed dramatically. It's, it's, we always measure, when we sit up here and make decisions on budgets. You can never really, sometimes it's tough, what's the metric you use to quantify that increase? Is it the teacher's contract? Is it whatever, whatever the increase is for that year to be able to fund those schools, right? You know, you look at, okay, well, what's the results look like? So this year, we've had some fantastic, like above normal results coming out of our, our school systems. Under the leadership of Superintendent Niemeyer. I would say that if, and we're really proud of that, Billy, and I know you're a very humble person and. We respect that, but at the same time. If it was to be, if you were to put an analogy of, you know. In sports, players coach, like Mike Vrabel. You know, he's a player's coach. Billy's the, a teacher superintendent. Where he's gained their respect.
I see, you wanted to say Aaron Boone? Did you wanna say Aaron Boone? I'm sorry.
Who is that? So Lou's a big Yankees fan, so we won't hold that against him, but that's what I'm saying. This whole educational culture is changing here. And the results and a lot of things are starting to come together with new schools and great results and, you know. Potentially talking to Newport and we welcome, I certainly welcome them. I know some other councils do as well that, you know, hey, let's share this. And let's make this the best educational system possible, but, you know, it's you folks in the background doing other things as well to help us. You know, with the dollars to be able to achieve these things and make it sustainable. Because, you know, you look at some of these, these schools, you know, we learned the lesson that you just can't over time. These buildings aren't sustainable. You can't sustain the maintenance on these things unless you do it together with somebody. And you have dedicated funds to be able to do that. And that's important to be able to do.
By the way, whatever results. I won't speak for my colleagues here, but I think they may say the same thing. I'll speak for myself. Whatever you need, whatever results from your conversations with Newport, whatever it is. If somebody says you can't do that, having to give us a call, we'll figure out a way to make it happen. I'll just, I'll just leave that there. The link, what's in Rhode Island general law can be changed.
I'm starting to like you, Lou. Just kidding. Okay. Any other councils have any other suggestions or comments? Charlie?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you all for coming down tonight. You know, one of the things with this government shutdown and, and you see the staggering numbers of people on SNAP on Medicaid. You know, and, and the numbers here in Rhode Island, one in three on Medicaid, one in eight on SNAP benefits. I, I hope we're not just looking at. You know, the fact that we're not getting the money for that. Let's look at why people are on that. Let's see what we can do to fix that because I think. That's something that gets lost in all of this is, you know, it, I've, I've seen on the news a lot, like the amount of people on SNAP benefits is staggering. And nationwide it really is, but I hope when you guys get back in the legislative session, you can look at what's leading to so many people on those benefits. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Charlie. Anyone else? Hey, listen, we appreciate that. I wish we could meet more often. To kind of recap and update where we're at. I think that'd be a good idea. This once a year really doesn't cut it for us. I'm sure it doesn't cut it for you as well. So, you know, kind of steps of progression. I know we get emails and you guys are pretty good about sending those and. Through Sean or about where we're at in some of these initiatives and where we've, where we've made some progress and where we haven't. And I think that's just as important to know. So the ball does, not that the ball, you know, intensely gets dropped, but sometimes priorities change. You know, so, okay.
Do, do any of these require resolutions or are you going to send us resolutions for any of these priorities?
So we'll send resolutions. I think that's become the practice and what you expect from us. So. Once the council has prioritized, then we'll, we'll get those resolutions right over.
That would be great.
Can I just ask one question? Just on, on regionalization and this is, this is premature. So if regionalization is to go forward, I guess that, that's gonna require. Legislation. So. From a placeholder standpoint, you know, and I guess, and this is something I guess for the town council to consider when they talk to the city. Is it better to submit some legislation so it's drafted and it may be amended or? Do we wait until the legislation is final and it comes in at the last minute? I don't know if you have an opinion on that.
I, I guess the conversation, I was having a conversation with Rep Carson. And one of the council members, council member Napolitano last week and. I guess I don't know if your timelines are aligned. But neither town has received any money from Ride. So at this point. You've, in terms of the, the rebate for the construction, the increased amount, if you regionalize, your, both towns are still eligible. But Newport obviously has been occupying their building. So I think it's, the question is how long can they wait?
Right. They defer their, their first payment to be able to continue this conversation.
That's right. And, and they might have to defer a second payment.
They may have to.
Yes.
That's gonna decision that they're gonna have to make depending upon their financial situation, which I think is probably okay at this point. I'm not there, but that's what I hear.
Cause their original timeline was April and if we were to do that, we would have to have this, this resolution in right away.
Right. And part of the conversation, just so you know, and everyone else knows is that, you know, we don't wanna rush this. Cause nothing good comes out of it when you rush. I think we've learned that lesson. So. We need to be able to make sure that we talk it through. There's plenty of time for discussions. You know, we both built schools at this point. It comes down to figuring out buildings.
Right.
You know, they pay their fair share, we pay our fair share, that kind of stuff. We already know how it would be structured, the same way it was last time. It's just, that's the fairest way. So those are the discussions we need to have, but some, as things have changed, they've built theirs. Their way, they could have got their reimbursement. They said, you know, if we can continue the talks, we'll, we'll defer that for the first year, but. Now we, to your point, Terry, they could be talking about a second year and I don't know if they could do that or not. That's, that's a decision that they'll need to make and nor do I wanna speak for them.
Right. And I wasn't trying to speak for them at all.
Don't want someone to say, hey.
That's right.
He said this about Newport.
No.
Wanna make sure.
Whatever you all decide.
Oh, yeah.
You'll let us know, but, but that was the one thing to, with the point Sean was raising that I was wondering about too. Cause if you wanted to do it in April, we would wanna do it right away. Cause if you wanted to do it in April, we would want to do it right away.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure that's, that's.
I, I took that from your comments at the last council meeting, I would add.
You want to make sure that we, uh, we don't rush this.
Understood.
I think that's, my personal opinion, that's the right avenue.
Mr. President, I concur with you. I would suggest just don't wait till the last minute. We can get it done because it's local, it's Newport, Middletown only, it's not like it affects anywhere else in the state. So it's the case where general legislation they want in by before we break in February. Mid, mid, middle, let's say President's Day in February, thereabouts. Town or local specific legislation? We can take up the last day, we've had stuff where people have come in with, we need to get this done. Okay, because, not just because they decided that day, but the council said we need to get this done, they were able to finally pass it because of. Don't really care the reason, and we got it done. When it gets to the end, then it can become a challenge with regards to. Well, do we really have to do it this year? Do we really have to do it now, it's late? But you want to do, you want to take your time, you want to do, you want to do what's right. So just let us know what helps needed along the way. But just know that Rhode Island general law can be changed.
Okay, I would just like to end by saying, um. You know, and thanking you for a, a lot of things you do that people don't see or realize that you do behind the scenes for. Each town that you guys represent, whether it's Middletown, Portsmouth, Jamestown. Vividin, Potts, a little Compton, uh, Louis in your case. Um, so, um, any help that you give us, we're grateful for. Um, and you probably don't hear thank you a lot, but we're saying thank you publicly. Thank you in advance. So, we appreciate it. Okay. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
No, motion to recess.
Oh, I'm sorry, geez, timeout, motion of recess, I got ahead of myself, I was excited.
All in favor? Aye. Counsel Logan.
A motion to reconvene?
Second.
A motion to second reconvene, all in favor? Aye, okay, thank you, let's move on to the regular meeting. Excuse me, school construction, communication of Justin Bernard, senior project manager. Project Management Services, Colliers project leaders in reference to new Middletown Middle High School. Gilbane guaranteed maximum price proposal, recommend to, recommendation to award tree relocation.
Motion to receive said communication?
Second.
All in favor? Justin, good evening.
Good evening, and thank you. Um, what I'd like to do before we get started with the uh recommendations is I, I want to go to my final slide. Um, which is the budget update, cause I think, um, you know, so that everybody has. Um, everyone knows the progression of the budget, I think it's important to make an informed decision on these recommendations to award. Um.
I think that's a good idea because when you look at it and you read it, you go, what?
There's a lot of numbers.
Don't understand the prog, the process.
Yep.
So I would appreciate that if you explained. Um, how that works and what, what's happening today.
Absolutely. Um, so to begin, we started off with the $190 million budget, which was $170 million for the middle high school. And $20 million for Valley Elementary School. Um, through three rounds of estimating through the schematic design, design development and 60% construction documents. Uh, we changed the budgets a bit to be 175.7 million dollars. Uh, for the middle high school, and that was taking approximately 5.7 million dollars from the elementary school. Um, budget to fund that, um, you know, bringing the elementary school budget down to about 14.3 million dollars. Coming through to today, um, with these guaranteed maximum price proposals, we were able to, um. Put approximately uh 2.8 million dollars back into the elementary school, taking it from the middle high school. Um, actually, let me take a step back, the 175 million dollar, 175.7 million dollars for the middle high school. Um, back in February of 2025, did not include any of the ad alternates that we're going to uh recommend to approve. Uh, tonight. Um, you know, the budget was much higher, market volatility back then was much higher, but we're very fortunate to be one of the first schools. Uh, going into construction this year, and we're benefiting from, you know, our neighboring states, um, having far less construction, so. Um, we were able to get, you know, from the RTAs that we presented over the last few months, we're, we're in a much better position. So, uh, back in February, again, we were at 175.7 million dollars with none of the uh ad alternates uh included. Uh, and same with the elementary school, 14.3 million dollars. Um, and that did not include any of the alternates we're going to discuss tonight. Um, coming to today, November of 2025, the updated budgets. Um, we are looking at approximately 173.3 million dollars for the middle high school, and that is inclusive. Of all of the alt, ad alternates that we're going to recommend to approve tonight, uh, that were not a part of uh the February budget. Uh, and we're also looking at bringing the elementary school budget back up to, you know, over 20 million dollars. Um, which funds not only the original scope. Um, that we were looking at back during uh the development of the construction documents, but also funding. Alternates, uh, all of the alternates, uh, which include roof, skylight, elevator, new stair lifts. And additional renovations to the, um, you know, to the hallways and, and common spaces. So our, our new projected budget, um, for the middle high school and the elementary school. Uh, is 193,555,300. Um, we have funding right now for 194.2 million dollars. Uh, and that funding includes the 190 million dollars of the bond. The 484,000 dollar appropriation from the general fund, which was to. Fund the larger generator and the hurricane rated fenestration for the, um, for the shelter. And then we have 3.7 million dollars of bond interest. Um. And with those funding sources and funding, uh, both the middle high school and Valley Elementary School, along with all the recommended alternates. Uh, we do have a funding surplus of over 600,000 dollars. Um, you know, that Colliers and is recommending can be used uh for renovations at Forest Avenue School. Any questions with regards to the budget before I go back and talk to you?
I just want to make sure that, um, everyone understands is that, you know, we borrowed 190 million dollars. And now you're saying it's 194 million dollars, I want to be clear on how we got there. I want everyone to understand that, where that money's coming from and how it got there.
Sure.
I understand that, you know, the, the add-ons that, you know, part of the process is that. You know, when you're kind of trying to come up with your budget, there's certain things you decide you can't do, so you, you, you take those out at the time, or you don't do them. Put them in this part of the project at the time. Now, the, where we're at with this guaranteed maximum pricing, um, after, I guess, 60% of. Of the construction documents, and we know exactly where we're gonna land, budget wise, now you're saying. Okay, now we can add these things back in that we were originally gonna, said we were gonna do, but we couldn't do them at the time. Because of the way.
The way the pricing was coming in.
Bid price was coming in, right, so. I want to make sure we're clear on that, we borrowed 190, that's all we're borrowing.
Correct.
I want to make sure we're clear on that. If you want, can you explain it better than I can?
We borrowed 190, well, just, we, we're authorized to borrow 190 million dollars and that's, that's. That's the extent of the authorization, the only additional dollars that Justin's discussing tonight. Is the 484,000 dollars that you've appropriated. And also, we're talking about 3.7 million dollars in interest earned on. The money we borrowed basically as it's, it's sat in account and it hasn't been used yet, that we're applying towards the project, which. Actually, we did just not too long ago on a, on a different project with the school department, with the uh, the lighting. Uh, there was, there was leftover interest money, so. But no, we're, we're not exceeding the 190 million dollars that was borrowed, and that's, that's basically the budget that. Colliers and the project team work under is that, that hundred, you know, the, the 190 million dollars.
Okay. Um, but just want to be clear that we're, we're not exceeding 190 of borrowing.
Correct.
We're using funds that, 3.7 million of bond interest that sat there and accumulated when we didn't use that money.
Right, just the time, the time.
To do things that we said we were gonna do originally, but we couldn't do because of the bid prices.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, and that, and those add-ons, what you're gonna discuss now?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, the first one we're gonna discuss actually is, um. Is tree location. Um, one of the alternates, it's actually alternate 13 that I'm going to be recommending that we reject in Gilbane's. Uh, guaranteed maximum price proposal, uh, is for relocating of nine trees that were identified by the tree commission. Um, to be relocated from around God A school. Um, and they're gonna be transplanted, uh, just south of where the new. New fields are going, uh, for the new middle high school. Um, using the master price uh agreement uh contract, we were able to get pricing. Uh, for the relocation of these nine trees from Northeastern Tree Service. Uh, they gave us a price of 8,900 dollars to do this work. Uh, compared to 67,000 dollars, uh, which was alternate 13 in the GMP that we're rejecting. Uh, this has been vetted by Colliers, uh, again, they are a, an approved MPA vendor. Uh, they came out to the site to uh see all nine trees in the area that it's been transplanted. They understand the time constraints on when those trees need to be transplanted. And are, you know, fully capable, insured, bonded and prepared to do the work. So I'm recommending that we proceed with, bless you. I'm recommending that we approve Northeastern Tree Service, uh, for this work.
Right. Any councils have any questions about the relocation of the trees based on the tree, tree commission's recommendation?
Thank you, Mr. President. Where, where are the trees again, right now?
The trees right now are on the, um, east and west side of God A Middle School.
And is, I mean, are they healthy, like, obviously you've gone through with it, everybody, but like, so. You know, we're moving these, is there any, is there any kind of warranty on them or like, are they gonna make it, basically?
They are healthy trees and generally you don't get a warranty on a transplanted tree.
Yeah.
The trees are, uh, young, uh, they are, they are healthy.
Okay, thank you.
And they will be transplanted during the dormant season, which, you know, doesn't guarantee success. Um, but it certainly, you know, goes a long way to making sure that, that they survive.
Okay. And that relocation's part of the landscaping?
Yes, it's coming out of Gilbane, so that'll be managed directly by Colliers and not through the guaranteed maximum price by Gilbane.
Right, all right, excellent. Any questions? Okay, let me read that resolution then. Number four is a resolution of the council in reference to approving the proposal from.
Do you want to start with number three?
Already did three.
Oh, okay. Okay, then we review this one, okay, got it.
That is the 17th, just kidding.
Thank you.
Resolution of the council, number four, approving the proposal from Northeast Tree Services Incorporated for the relocation of trees. At the new Middletown Middle High School site, funding from the school improvement bond proceeds. And all expenses recorded in the school department's capital fund, capital, capital projects fund. And the town administrator is authorized to execute the agreement on behalf of the town.
Motion to pass said resolution?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Here and none, all in favor? Aye. Number five, communication of Justin Bernard, senior project manager, project management services. Colliers project leaders in reference to new Middletown Middle High School Gilbane guaranteed maximum price proposal.
Okay.
Motion to receive said communication?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. I just want to make sure you, if you could start off by explaining what. Um, the, the guaranteed maximum price proposal is.
Sure.
Um, and how that, what that locks the town in at this point in time, going, well, really for the rest of the project.
Yeah, so the guaranteed maximum price is the guaranteed maximum price that you will pay for this building. Based on the design that the proposal was built off of, which was the 100% construction documents. Um, it guarantees you. Um. The only way you would have additional costs is if there was a design change required. You know, due to a design issue, um, due to additional, um. Educational enhancements, you know, requested by the town. Um, but under no circumstances can the value of Gilbane's contract be uh increased without a legitimate. Uh, request by the town, uh, for additional services.
So Gilbane's, for example, couldn't come back and say, hey, town, we have this change order for 2 million dollars?
The only change order, the only additional costs outside of the town's control. Which are outside of the, the guaranteed maximum price are for tariffs. Um.
For what?
Tariffs. So. Tariffs would be funded if the, if we do get hit with any legitimate tariffs, which to date, we have not, um, seen any of our projects in the state. which to date, we have not, um, seen any of our projects in the state, uh, be affected by tariffs. Um, none that have been legitimate. Uh, we've had requests for, uh, change orders for tariffs that have all been rejected for lack of, uh, the appropriate backup. Uh, but, uh, any legitimate tariffs, uh, would be funded by the project contingency.
Okay.
But, uh, like you said, if the Gilbaines came to you for a two million dollar change order to, because they didn't estimate a wall properly, or looked at the wrong scale, which has happened in the past, um, they wouldn't be eligible for additional costs, for additional funds.
Okay.
This, this essentially shifts the risk of those sorts of things back to Gilbane. If, if there's a price increase, um, the risk of that is on Gilbane.
Correct.
Um, in terms of materials and things of that sort, so.
Excellent. Okay, any councils have any question about the guaranteed maximum price proposal? Okay. Uh, let's read the, I'll read that resolution in, and then we'll move on to seven. Resolution of the council in reference to approving the construction manager at-risk guaranteed maximum price contract for the Middletown Middle High School construction project with Gilbane Building Company, funding from the school improvement bond proceeds and all expenses recorded in the school department's capital projects fund, and the town administrator is authorized to execu- execute the agreement on behalf of the town.
Motion to pass said resolution.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Okay. Here and none, all in favor? Aye. Anybody oppose? Number seven. Communication of Justin Bernard, senior project manager, project management services. Colliers project leaders in reference to Valley Elementary School, Elementary School Complex, Bentley guaranteed maximum price proposal funding from the school impro- improvement bond proceeds and all expenses recorded in the school department's capital projects fund, and the town administrator is authorized to execute the agreement on behalf of the town as follows. You want me to read all these in? Wendy, am I reading all these examples here in? Okay, then give me him, just bear with me. Okay, base GMP amendment value inclusive of previous RTAs and allowances, nine million, four hundred twenty-seven thousand, one hundred seventy-one dollars. Change order zero zero one, mechanical observation, seventeen thousand, four hundred eighty-two dollars. Change order zero zero four, courtyard si- courtyard site work, twenty-two thousand, six hundred seventeen dollars. Change order zero zero six, HVAC equipment manufacturers, seventy-four thousand, two hundred ninety-five dollars. Add alternate number one A cafeteria roof, two hundred ninety-one thousand, four dollars. Add alternate number one B, uh, gym roof, one hundred forty-seven thousand, fourteen dollars. Add alternate number one C, library and science wing roof, one million, six hundred seven thousand, four hundred fifty-one dollars. Add alternate one D, mechanical wing roof, one million, ninety-one thousand, five hundred thirty-five dollars. Add alternate one, number one D, mechanical wing roof, I just read that one, sorry. Add alternate one E skylights, hundred and sixty-five thousand, nineteen dollars. Add alternate number two, column enclosures, one hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and eight dollars. Add alternate number three, first floor bathroom core, six hundred thirty-three thousand, one hundred seventy-eight dollars. Add alternate number four, newer elevator, seven hundred fifty-three thousand, five hundred ninety-four dollars. Add alternate number five, PR dash zero zero two steer slash chairlifts, one hundred seventy-two thousand, nine hundred forty-seven dollars. Add alternate number six, PR dash zero zero one, hallway renovations, four hundred thirty-eight thousand, five hundred seventy dollars, for a total of fourteen million, nine hundred sixty-five thousand, nine hundred eighty-five dollars.
Motion to receive said communication.
Second.
Motion is second to receive, all in favor? Aye. Justin.
You said it all.
That's not gonna cut it.
No. Um, really, I'd, I'd like to open it up to any questions related to the, um, base GMP amendment. Um, the change orders, uh, that are inclusive, uh, or alternates, you know, one through six.
I have a question, Mr. President.
Sure.
It's been a while since I was on the building committee, but I, I wanna go back to the re-roofing we did on our schools with the ten million dollars, like, over, what was that, ten years ago now? So, all of these roofs here that you're adding, this, I, I take it this is all re-roofing, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So none of these were ever touched in that original bond that we did?
Right. These are all roofs that are beyond their, uh, useful life.
Okay.
Uh, and we are not touching any of the roofs that have been previously done.
And what, is it twenty-year warranty, twenty-five?
Forty.
Forty. Better. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? So what would happen if the council said, and I'll anticipate this, but I'm sure some people in the audience may be thinking this. Why would you do this?
Um, well, just the roofs or this project in?
Well, we talked about going from one ninety to one ninety-four with that, four eighty-four out of the general fund and the three point seven from the, from the, um, interest, three point seven million from the interest from the bond money sitting there that was, that was realized.
Yeah, the four eighty-four, uh, four hundred eighty-four thousand, um, you know, absolutely necessary to, uh, increase the, yeah, you know, increase the shelter.
For the shelter.
Yeah.
Understood.
Um, by including the three point seven million dollars of bond interest, you're now able to fund, you know, these, you know, ten alternates, um, even though they're one through six, um, which is going to provide for a, uh, safer environment, um, for the school. It's gonna add, um, educational enhancements, um, you know, for, uh, you know, PR one, which is, uh, alternate six. Um, you know, it's, it's hallway renovations, but it's really, it's brightening up the school, it's creating, um, you know, a, an environment for, uh, outside the classroom learning, um, new lockers, it's really, it's taking a high school and making it look and feel like an elementary school, um. And, you know, things like the bathroom core, um, doing the bathroom core on the first floor, it, it, it provides another, um, another bathroom with, uh, age-appropriate, uh, fixtures. Um, you'll have those on the, on the upper level where the classrooms are, but, uh, that alternate, you know, has another bathroom core, um, that, that's more appropriate for the age group. Uh, and again, the elevator and the stair lifts, uh, absolutely necessary for, uh, accessibility. Um, you know, the stair lifts alone do provide, uh, access to everywhere you need to go. Uh, it's not super efficient, and it's, it's not conducive for, you know, for someone with an injury or someone with the, a long-term, you know, mobility issue to get, uh, to and from the administration area to, um, you know, to the second floor where the, um, classrooms are.
Right. Um, Ed, did you wanna speak? You, you would have to come up to the, uh, mic, so.
One thing that we're adding.
Just, just your name and address for the record, please.
Edward Brady, Two Maple River Road. Um, one other thing it does is provides a lot of things that high school didn't have, such as an elevator. I think the other thing is, is if you look at the Carter Restoration Project that we're doing, it's like night and day, it's like totally different. And I think all these elements are important to do. I think the fact that we also are able to get this at fifty-five percent reimbursement is certainly something that we cannot, not do, basically. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Okay. Charlie, yeah, sure.
Um, first of all, thank you, Justin and Ed, for setting it up. I, I took a tour of the new high school last Friday, and, um, it's, it's really good to see, like, the professionalism of Colliers and, and Gilbane on this project. I've been on a lot of construction projects in my career, and, you know, it's a tight site as we, as we did, what, walked around, but it's, it's really great to see the level of detail that you guys are following, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
The only thing, um, I would just kind of question is, any kind of leftover money, like, I, is Forest Ave really even covered in any of this? Like, should we be spending that money on Forest Ave if that got brought up as an example there?
We have a memorandum of agreement, uh, with Ride, uh, to do renovations at, uh, Forest Avenue School. Um, the memorandum of agreement, excuse me, um, yeah, memorandum of agreement included, uh, the middle high school included renovations to the existing high school. Um, it also included money it, um, appropriated for, uh, a quidnic school, which we're not doing because we're surplusing the school and Forest Avenue. So yes, we, any work we do at Forest Avenue will.
That was all part of the bond, like.
That was written into the bond.
Okay.
So where we are right now is, uh, the project team has requested a proposal from the architects to look specifically at Forest Avenue. And we're looking at two different scenarios. One is looking at making, um, a base level of improvements. Uh, and then the second sort of scenario we're looking at is, uh, trying to address all, all, all compliance issues, um, to bring it up to a, a much higher standard. So we're, we're in the process of, uh, now that we have the GMP done for the middle high school and for Valley Elementary is, um, reconciling the amount of money that we have available, having the architects come back with a revised plan for Forest Avenue. And then we'll come back to the council, uh, to discuss how, how we might want to approach that.
But, but that was part of the, the bond.
It is part of the bond.
Oh, it was written in legis- legislature.
Exactly, yes. Yep, and, and to Justin's point, we have a contract with Ride, which makes us eligible for the, the fifty-five percent reimbursement. Uh, so they, they would not be surprised, you know, if we do work there, um, that we would be seeking that, that level of reimbursement from them.
And we also have a construction manager under contract, um, Bentley Corporation is under contract for any of the elementary education, uh, work that we need to do.
Yep. And I would say just the last piece, uh, Mr. Collins, Ed Collins, our facilities, uh, director, has been actively, um, you know, looking at the work that's already been done by, um, by the architects, the, the condition reports that have been prepared of, of the building, um, as well as issues that he's already well aware of, uh, so trying to, uh, make the best priority and, 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 you know, figure out those best places where the next dollar is spent, but, um, you know, and I, and one of the things that Justin talked about tonight is, we, we started this process making certain that we could pay for the middle high school. Uh, there was money moved from the elementary school into that project. Once we were able to do value engineering and get bids in, you know, what, what's happened tonight is we moved money back into the elementary school. So now we move over to that last bucket being Forest Elementary School, to, to Charlie's point, uh, to make sure that when we cut the ribbon on all three of these projects, that, you know, people see improvements across the entire school district. And then there's, there's small things that we're looking at, and I'll just, it's like a small one, you know, the level of, of detail, like, uh, in the Valley Elementary School, one of the things that we're looking at is lowering the stage so that it's more age-appropriate and it's, it's ADA accessible. But we not only look at that as trying to maximize the use of that space, but also to create the continuity between the elementary school and the black box theater that we're building, you know, up at the, uh, the middle high school, so, um, that same level of thought, I think, Mr. Collins is putting into, you know, Forest Avenue to make sure we have, we have that early, early edu-, you know, early, uh, child education, uh, center that transitions and complements when they go to the elementary school. And that, 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 again, transition is, you know, is logical, and it, it continues to build upon itself. Trying to focus in on that vertical, um, curriculum, you know, that we're hoping to achieve through Superintendent, uh, Meemeyer. So that's where we're headed. But, yeah, it, to your point and question, no, it's, it's not forgotten, and that's our, that'll be our next. This is a milestone meeting for us. Uh, the next milestone meeting will be coming up with a final plan for Val-, uh, Forest Avenue, and bringing that to you for your consideration.
So, I have a question, Sean. So the money that was at three point seven, that was, that was realized in interest from the bond money, is that money restricted just to the, to the school project? Or is that money that could be used for anything in the town?
No, it'd be the school project.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make clear, because that was in my mi- on my mind that, and that's why I said, hey, why would you do this? Three point seven million's a lot of money, right? So, um, I just want to make sure that it was clear that, um, that money cannot, you cannot take that money and go, hey, let's go pave some roads with it.
No.
Or let's do something else. It's restricted just for school, and what happens if you didn't need it for the school or use it for the school? What would happen to that money?
Well, at this point, we would probably issue less debt, um, or you'd pay down the debt.
Okay.
But it would, it would go into the project somehow.
Okay. So part of the project is, just to recap, is you say you're gonna do all these things, and then when the, when you're doing your budget, and I look at Mr. Brady because, I mean, he needs some help here. Um, I remember you saying this probably a year or so ago, is that, 'cause this is, some of this, I mean, we're not experts up here on this, so as that project goes along, you know, we needed to understand how that process works, be able to make informed decisions, right? So, um, you know, he told me, he's like, hey, you, you, the way it works is you say you're gonna do this, and this, and then you come up with a budget. And sometimes you're not able to do everything you said you were gonna do in that budget, so you have these, what are they called, alternates? Is that what you call them? Alternates. So, so they're alternates, and at the time, you don't act on them because they're not within your budget.
Correct.
So once you get the guaranteed maximum price and all the bids are in, then you can go back and say, we said we're gonna do this, we have the money to do this, based upon what's transpired, now we're gonna do this.
Right.
And that's what's happened.
Correct.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure everybody's clear on that, okay? Uh, yeah.
John Wasnickelish, one-six-one Busher Drive.
Hi.
Um, I was looking at the list, and, uh, I noticed it was like two hundred and seventy-seven thousand for, uh, trash receptacles, uh, picnic tables, and the, uh, the other bin.
John, can you come up and speak into the?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So what you had listed before, uh, in the, in the old proposal, it, it designated like nine hundred each for, for the receptacles, which is eighteen hundred bucks. Four picnic tables at fifteen hundred, which was six thousand, four benches at two thousand each, eight thousand. And then, uh, four outdoor tables, thirty-eight hundred each for fifteen grand, lump sum around thirty-two thousand. But now, now it's up to like two-seventy-seven for this change?
I'm not sure with that value, thirty-two thousand.
Yeah, I just was curious about the specs. What changed on that?
Um, I would have to get back to you. There is a full scope, and off the top of my head, I can't remember exactly how many benches, picnic tables, uh, traps, trash receptacles are included.
Justin, I would say this, if we can get John an answer.
Absolutely.
I know it's tough to do it off the cuff with numbers sometimes people throw at you, and not having that, all the information in front of you, but if you can get him an answer, that'd be fantastic.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Okay, thank you, John. Um, okay, so any other questions, committee councils? No? Okay, let's move on to the resolution. Uh, number eight, resolution of the council in reference to approving the construction manager at-risk guaranteed maximum price contract for the Middletown Middle High School construction project with Bentley Builders LLC.
Motion to pass said resolution.
Second.
Okay, last chance. Any further discussion or questions or comments? Here and none, all in favor? Aye. Anybody oppose? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to public forum. Number nine, pursuant to Rule twenty-five, the rules of council, citizens may address the town on one subject only. Said subject of substantive town business, neither discussed during the regular meeting, nor related to personnel or job performance. Citizens may speak for no longer than five minutes and must submit a public participation form to the council clerk prior to the start of the meeting. Um, all items discussed during this session will not be voted upon. We have four, okay. Mary Dennis. How are you? Excellent. What do you have for us?
Well, gee, well, I'm, I'm here.
Mary, can we just hang on one second?
Just, this was just pointed out, on number eight, which is approving the maximum price contract with Bentley, the item mentions the middle high school project rather than the Valley Elementary project. So I think it would be best if we just sort of re-voted on that one over.
Hey, that's why he's a solicitor, you know? Catches these things. So that's a typo? Did, what do we need to do here to correct that?
We need to change that for resolution of the council approving the construction.
Machine.
Manager at-risk guaranteed maximum price contract for the, instead of middle high school.
Valley Elementary.
Be for the Valley Elementary.
Okay. Do we need to, do we need to rescind that vote or?
I, I, I think we, we're just correct, doing it and correcting it. So I think we're fine.
Okay. All right. Uh, Chris, uh, Council Logan.
So we're gonna provide a motion to pass said resolution.
I'll, I'll read it. I'll, I'll read it in.
We just read it in.
I'll read it in. Okay, number eight. Uh, resolution of the council in reference to approving the construction manager at risk guaranteed maximum price contract for Valley Elementary um, school construction project with Bentley Builders LLC.
Motion to pass said resolution.
We're not gonna carry you all night. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Let's let's move on. Mary, I apologize. I didn't catch that. I should have caught that and I didn't.
That's fine.
Don, thank you for catching that. Um, I saw you come over to this listener and say, hey, straighten those guys out. Mary Stonewalls.
Stonewalls. That's what I'm here for. Um, just to kind of jog your memories and then bring it all back. As, as you know, um, the historical society does have a Stonewall Committee. And I think it was back in the nineteen nineties that the town council put together a proclamation that the Monday before Thanksgiving is Stonewall Recognition Day in the town of Middletown. Yeah. And um, so I'm just bring, I, I know it's a, it's a week early, but you're not here next Monday. So, you know, what was, you know, there was no way to do it then. Um, so I wanted to bring that up and um, just say that uh, the Stonewall Committee was started, like I said, back in the nineteen nineties. Um, the two gentlemen that really put this all together with the town council and make the proclamation. And they also put together an ordinance to protect our stone walls. Okay? Uh, with time, those poor gentlemen, they passed away. So I would say this kind of laid dead for about ten years, I think. And uh, Francine Nuth um, has resurrected this program for us over the last couple of years. She's been out going on to people's houses. They, people have sent in requests. What we do is we visit the property when someone says about, they have a stone wall. We go out and, and look at it and give the owner a certificate that said that they have a historic stone wall. Um, it has to pass certain criteria. Obviously it, it can't have any cement in it. Okay? It has to be a dry stone wall. And we have done this over the years. There's over, there's like sixty-five houses that we've done. And we try to help people who want to repair and improve their stone walls. Um, we also, um, as we're driving around, if there's developers that are in there digging away and there's a stone wall on the street side, we do tell them they cannot tear down that stone wall.
Oh, there's a stone wall ordinance.
Yeah, there's, there's stone wall ordinance. Um, so a lot of people will say, um, why? Why do we wanna, what's, what's the purpose of keeping our stone walls? And um, there's basically two sides to this. The stones explain the whole history of how the land here was even formed. It's all geology in regards to, as we all know, when you live here and you wanna plant a tree or a bush and try to dig a hole, forget it. Okay? You're digging out stones left and right to make a hole to put in a, any kind of a post. And that's all due to the glacier. So there's a whole history on that side. But the other side of the, is, is as the farmers came here and the colonists and they started to work the land, the stones all started to surface during the winter time with the freezing. Uh, they, in the spring, they just, they just keep coming to the surface. Well, they, they had to move them. And as we all know, most of the people coming out of Europe lived in environments that had fences. They, they, they had a surrounding type of wall or fence. So this was very common to them to block off what they considered their property, their land. Cause it, it was, it was a gift to them to come here and acquire land. They didn't have that opportunity. And so these stone walls are really the beginning and the foundations of this whole area. And it's not just Middletown, but it, it goes into, you know, other areas. And we do need to protect them and listening to the other, the speakers earlier in regards to housing and everything and the character of the town, this does help the character of the town. People who come here, who are from other areas that have never seen them, the, it, it's amazing what they'll say to us in regards to, where do these come from? What, you know, they're amazed by it. They are beautiful. And they're quite a workmanship. We also do provide, um, uh, we have a list of people who can do stone walls. Cause at first, when we started to resurrect this, everybody thought we could just build their stone walls back. It's like, uh, no, you have to hire somebody to do that. Um, so we, we have a list of people that we give to homeowners so that they can look into. And we try to tell them also, if, if anything, you can build these in small amounts. You don't have to do the whole thing all at once. Um, also maintenance is kind of important. If you have a wall, don't let vines grow in and out of it. Don't let things grow over it. Uh, trees, bushes, try to keep three to six feet on either side of that stone wall clear. It'll help it out. It, it, it's, it is kind of like a living thing. It moves. And then if you walk your stone wall once a year, you'll see there's stones that's kind of stick out and the wall sometimes will start to look like a little snake. If you bang those stones back in and they, they slide right back in, um, that wall straightens up and tightens up and it'll, it'll be there for another hundred years. So um, that's what, why I'm here. I gave all you guys a little packet. It's just like, it's I just Xerox things from our archival files. It's just to kind of re-in, remind you of, of what we have here. Cause it is a gift. And uh, I, I'm a firm believer in, you know, don't reinvent the wheel. It's already being done. It's done well. We just keep passing it on. But um, we have a new leader, Ruth Lester is gonna take it over this year. And um, we just continue with people mailing forms for us to come and look at their walls and give them a certificate clarifying if, if it's historic. And basically it is, as long as it's a dry stone wall. Um, and if, anything from the twentieth century back is considered historic, nothing in the twenty-first.
Well, we certainly appreciate your work, the Historical Society and the Stonewall Committee's uh, commitment to preserving, protecting and really promoting.
Yeah.
Cause it really does define, it's a, it's a
Yeah, and, yeah, it is, it is.
Come here and go, hey, what's with the rock walls around here?
That's what I mean. That's what I mean. Yeah. They, people in other areas. Um, maybe someday, I mean, I, i- i- if we could ever have some kind of a program so that people, cause it's expensive. This is labor intense for these guys to rebuild these.
Yeah, a while back, it was like three hundred dollars a foot. I don't know what it is.
Yeah, I can imagine. Yeah, yeah. Um, uh, it would be wonderful to have. Cause I know home, there's a lot of homeowners whose walls are in tough shape, but trying to repair them is, is not easy.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I actually got my certificate at my house. My wall doesn't look that good right now. Um, but how do we, like, do you have any recommendations for people? Is there any grants out of there, out there?
Pardon me?
Is there any grants out there available that would help with this? Because it is expensive.
It is expensive.
On way down on my uh, project.
I don't, I don't know of any through this. Maybe the state has some or, you know, uh, federal, I'm, I'm not sure. But yeah, that would, that's some, that's one of the things we, then one of the next steps is to try to figure out how people can be helped to rebuild these.
Even teach us how to. I, I, it'll, it'll take forever if I do it, but maybe.
Yeah, it is. It's not easy. It's, it's a, it's physics. It's physics.
Thank you.
All right. No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Okay. Uh, is Mike Craftchuck? I didn't see my, oh, there he is over there.
I'm.
Hiding in the beard. It's November shave, what's it called?
No Shave November.
No Shave November. How you doing?
Good, good. Micah Craftchuck, one six nine Fay Lane. Um, good evening. I appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm here to discuss the tax classification system uh, that the council changed in March of twenty twenty-five. It was discussed at the last meeting. I wasn't able to attend and I watched it. I just want to clarify some things. Uh, my tax status, my property was changed and reclassified as a non-owner occupied rate, despite the fact that I'm a full-time resident of Middletown. And uh, I've always complied with the regulations. A little bit of backstory, in twenty twenty-four, I properly registered my home under the town's ordinance that applied to owner occupied uh, properties offering short-term rentals where individuals reside on property, the grandfathered in um, status. The tax ordinance uh, requires that the property owner for owner occupied tax rate meet the following criteria. Reside at the subject property for more than six months per year, be the legal title holder of the property, be a Middletown, uh, registered Middletown voter, not claiming an owner occupied rate elsewhere. I meet each of these classifications. Uh, my domicile, voter registration and driver's license all reflect one six nine Fay Lane. Uh, the property is and has been my primary residence. When I registered my property as a short-term rental, there were no negative tax implications uh, regarding registered in such a manner. In fact, I would say that the council uh, was adamant that there would be no negative effects uh, registering before the deadline to be grandfathered in. Um, when I was notified of the tax classification change, I immediately contacted the town, inquired about the change and asked if I could amend my filing. I was able to amend my filing and then afterwards I was told I had to revert it back and it was no longer permitted. So my rate went to the non-owner occupied rate. Um, the recent language added to the ordinance regarding short-term rentals was intended to address non-resident investors. Um, not actual residents who live in their homes who were grandfathered in, which is a very small amount that were negatively impacted by this. Um, I think the way it is being interpreted uh, enforced only harms local homeowners, people who contribute to the community year round uh, while having no actual impact on individuals uh, who do not reside in Middletown. Um, my position is simple, owner occu-, owner occupied residence should not be penalized under this new tax change. Um, especially after being grandfathered in. The ordinance's purpose was to protect neighborhoods and full-time residents, not restrict them. Um, I would request that the council uh, look deeper into this issue uh, as this language only negative affects residents who took this opportunity to be grandfathered in. Because the language that was added affects the variance, which really doesn't change anything for them because they have to go through the variance process. It only affected residents who were grandfathered in. So you basically said, if you're a resident who was grandfathered in, you're no longer considered a resident as far as tax purposes go, which doesn't make any sense. So I just wanted to be heard on that. I don't think that that was clear last week. I think Leon tried to explain it, but I don't think that anybody understood the intent, the consequences of this change when this was being changed.
Yeah, sometimes Mike, there's, when we, we make decisions, you know, there's unintended consequences we, we don't think about. And that's just being honest. I mean, you think you're doing the right thing and I think we did try and do the right thing. But then there's those consequences that arise in your particular case. And I said it last meeting and I'll say it again. It just, not because you're here, not because I know you. It, it could be, uh, it was a gentleman that came a few months ago. It just doesn't sit right that somebody's a full-time resident and they're paying a different rate. Now I understand why it happened after the fact that we, that we changed that, that ordinance. But I'm not saying it makes it right. So um, I think we'll probably see something coming back before us pretty shortly.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks. Okay, Wendy.
How are you?
I'm good, thank you. Wendy Reel, forty-eight Swan Drive. At the last council meeting, I was, I asked a question about the recent eleven point four million dollar loan for the one-ten Enterprise Building as it relates to Rhode Island General Law. To date, I have not received an answer and now must draw my own conclusion based on the scant available information. It appears that the recent eleven point four million dollar note is issued under Rhode Island General Law forty-five dash twelve dash four, which allows a town to issue short-term debt to pay present expenses that may be misaligned with tax receipts and other municipal schedules. I'm struggling to understand how an eight million dollar discretionary building renovation project scheduled for twenty twenty-six is a present expense and liability of the town. It appears that no contracts have been awarded for this proposed capital project and therefore no actual current expense or liability has been incurred. If this is not the case, I would like to know who this project was awarded to. Because there is still an opportunity for this proposal to be heard by the voters as required by the town charter. Thank you. Please make this public record.
Thank you, Wendy. Okay, who else do we have? Gina, I, I, I'm gonna butcher your last name, ma'am. I apologize. Orselak? All right. How are you?
I'm good.
Good.
I'm a new grandma.
Heck, congratulations.
Very exciting. Okay, okay. I didn't do anything. They did it. Um.
Yeah, okay. I'm sure you're really happy. Good thing about grandchildren, you can send them home.
This is true.
Yeah.
Okay. Gina Orselak, twenty-one William Drive in Middletown. Good evening. I know you've been presented with many different viewpoints and have heard many opinions about the proposed town center and library location. You have an important decision to make. The Middletown taxpayers are trusting that you will represent them, their wishes, their vision of the Middletown they want to live in. I remember a survey several years ago and I remember being impressed that we as taxpayers were being asked what was important to us. I know my family and I were not alone in wanting open space. I also know that once open space is gone, it's gone forever. What to do about a town center is a big forever decision. It's one that we as neighbors together have to live with forever. And so I respectfully ask that you take all the information, all the opinions, all the suggestions and weigh them all to decide what the future of Middletown will look like. I trust that you will keep Middletown, the family-centered, close-knit community that we all cherish. Please reject the town center and please leave the library where it is front and center as a testament to Middletown's dedication and value for learning, education, community and family. Thank you all for everything that you do and happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, Gina.
Make this a record.
You have to, you have to give her a copy of that, ma'am. All right. Gina, happy Thanksgiving. Thank you. All right. Congratulations. All right. See you later. Oh, too funny. Okay. Uh, let's move on. That's it. No more. Anybody on Zoom, Wendy? Okay, Zoom is working. Excellent. Okay, let's move on to uh,
Motion to act as a board of licensed commission.
We have a motion to second act as a board of licensed commission. All in favor? Aye. You don't have a few, did you fill out a form, Chris? No? Did you fill out a form? Yeah, well, of course.
Consider remove that motion. I was uh, buying a car and it took longer than, than usual. Um, I had shared.
Just your name and address.
Chris Semenelli, five forty-two Walcott, uh, Middletown, Rhode Island. Um, I, and I, I had shared with the council an upcoming agenda that we have for a, a summit, for Affordable Housing Summit that will occur T C R I ten, ten to uh, two, this, this Wednesday. So essentially what it is, it's a, it's a group of people um, exploring different opportunities for housing and addressing other social issues that exist in the community. So the uh, the agenda, the way it's laid out is that we'll actually have a, a, a group of tables. We call that a vendor table. And there'll be ten, ten tables with, with uh, nonprofits and for-profits. We call that a vendor table and there'll be ten, ten tables with, with uh, nonprofits and for-profits that provide services to the community, both for um, homeless people and, and just people in general, whether it's uh, mental health issues. So there's, there's a whole cadre of tables that we'll have uh, at CCRI. During the, during the course of the, of the program, then we'll have reviews um, and actually interviews with people that are dealing with like Cheryl at Turning Around Ministries, who, who are dealing with people that are living on the streets. And, and we're, and we're gonna, we'll go progressively from one topic to the other to, to identify and cover issues that are not only related to um, uh, people on the streets, but also people that have problems finding housing, people with mental health issues. We, we had a, we had a forum actually at Innovate, Innovate Newport where we reviewed the tiny homes that were, were being developed in Texas. Um, and these were uh, these were uh, homes that were 450 square feet. They were designed uh, like a, a hotel room, um, a long-stay hotel room. The rent was um, $250 a week. And uh, so, and it was a, it's a process by which they actually developed a uh, a, a whole environment where it had trees, they had um, they had uh, uh, they had um, lakes. Well, and the, the gentleman who, who established this actually was uh, buying the, the, the homes themselves. Um, and then at some point in time, his supplier went, went out of business. So he vertically integrated and started manufacturing them. So, and there's such a demand for that tiny home structure and that cost structure that he has a backlog of a thousand um, right now. Because we had that, the forum, people came up to us afterwards and said, we'd like to have these ADUs, more of these ADUs in, in our, in our, in our population. One of the things that the uh, this group feels that this type of problem and the issue that we have with uh, housing, affordable housing, needs to be handled more on a regional basis instead of a, a town basis, it becomes more impactful. So uh, actually some people came up and there, there actually is gonna be somebody who manufactures affordable housing at, at, at that event on, on Wednesday. So bottom line is, we also provided a survey for people in, in the community that are addressing these issues to identify the issues that need to be impacted, what solutions are. And bottom line, what our goal is at the end of the session is to summarize what, what the issues are and what the possible solutions are. And then pass them on to people perhaps in our legislative base or even in the towns to identify ways to maybe streamline some, some of these units. Um, and so that's basically what I have. We have some great speakers. So it's free. There's pizza for, for lunchtime um, entertainment. And CCRI Newport, which are an excellent, excellent partner and they have been for partners for us in other uh, events. So thank you. Appreciate that.
So Chris, I've been, I'm, I'm sure we've all been following the emails you've been sending us about the, the uh, affordable housing with the tiny houses and also with the homelessness. So we appreciate you certainly, you can hear the passion and the determination in your voice for trying to get something done here. So we appreciate you doing that, you know.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
And for those of you that don't know, Chris is a, was the council president from 2010 to 2014.
Right. Thanks.
Thanks, Chris. Okay. Okay.
Motion to act as a board of licensed commission.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, act as a board of licensed commission application. Uh, number 10, application of Li Yi Li and Li Feng Guo, DBA Chinese uh, Qing Tao Chinese Restaurant, 268 West Main Road to transfer class BV liquor license to RJR Incorporated, DBA Qing Tao Chinese Restaurant for the 2025, 2026 licensing year for the use at the same premises. This requires uh, advertising for public hearing to be held on our December, our first 2025 meeting.
Motion to receive said application and advertise for a public hearing to be held on December 1st, 2025.
Second.
Any conversation? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Anybody oppose? Thank you. Go ahead.
Motion to reconvene as a town council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, any councils want to pull any items off the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion to second approve the consent calendar in its entirety, all in favor? Aye. Number 14, auditors and audit to the town of Middletown. This is the second reading and audit and amendment to the town code of the title of Middletown. Title 11, general regulations, chapter 90, animals, 90.03, disposition of carcasses and waste.
Motion to adopt said ordinance on its second reading.
Second.
We have a motion as second to adopt said ordinance in its second reading. Peter, now this is, you've cleaned this up. I just want.
The council's request, I submitted a revised uh, version of the uh, of the ordinance, which we also ran by the administration as well as the police department and everyone is on board uh, with the new revision as drafted, which I think you all have a copy of. So we should just make sure we incorporate uh, and you may just want to perhaps read subsection D as part of, you know.
Do you want to say as amended? I'm not sure what you've changed, what's underlined, correct?
Yes.
So they can adopt.
We just say as amended on the doc.
Yes. Oh, we're ready for a second? What are we doing?
Dude, I'm not sure what you, what you're asking.
So the, 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 and I don't have the prior version in front of me, but basically the, the prior version could have been read as saying that you couldn't enforce the ord- ordinance. Unless the horse first defecated on the road, which obviously we didn't want to have. We wanted the any horse on a public street sidewalk, public place to be required to wear uh, one of the waistbags. So that's what it says now. And we did retain the provision that requires anybody who's in control of a horse, which whether they've got a bag on or not, defecates on the street, still has the responsibility to clean it up.
Oh, is the motion to approve the ordinance as, as amended?
To approve the amendment as amended.
Prove the amendment as amended.
He's got it.
Okay, so.
And that's any horse. That's the proper language. Mrs. Flynn.
Terry Flynn, 34 Warren Avenue. Nothing grammatical tonight. I was just wondering.
Thank you very much.
Very welcome. Typically ordinances come through the planning department. I was just wondering what the feedback was from the horse owners on this particular ordinance or if anybody reached out to that population.
I'm not sure. I know there was an ordinance already in place as we knew to be able to, if the horse defecated on the street, you know, and they do the horse, the riding and things down by the beach, they were supposed to clean it up. That, that ordinance is you know, been on the books for a while now.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure if anybody's reached out to, to these folks.
I, I would have to go back and talk to Olivia. Um, this is, this is a longstanding request. This, this actually came through my office over a year ago from the Beach Commission. Um, and it's also based on feedback from people that walk and bike through the area uh, where it's un, you know, they find it unsafe when the, the horse waste is on the road and then you've gotta travel further in the road to avoid, avoid the waste. So um, I, I can't answer your question.
Okay. It's the pleasure of the council. Yeah. You want to move forward with it or? You do. Okay.
So we're going to provide a motion to adopt said ordinance on its second reading as amended at amendment. Am I right when I said that?
Amendment as amended. Second.
Second that, please.
See, that's why she's the master clerk, see? Okay. Is there a second?
Yeah.
You did. Any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Dennis.
So Sean, will you be reaching out to the folks that this will impact and make them aware of the new ordinance?
Yes, Olivia would do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, excellent. Okay. We have a motion to second, all in favor? Aye. Anybody oppose? Okay.
Yes, I said no.
Okay. All right, let's move on to uh, town council business. Number 15, communication to Vice President Welch, Councilor Connington and myself in reference to uh, discussion of uh, street fair in the Atlantic Beach District.
Motion to receive said communication.
We have a motion to second to receive, all in favor? Aye. So myself, Councilor Connington and uh, Vice President Welch were talking and discussing a uh, a possibility of having um, or exploring um, a street fair. Um, when I attended Newport's street fair, I thought it was pretty cool. You know, it gave the businesses a nice little pop down there. Um, I think that uh, it, it drew in a lot of uh, community involvement. And at the same time, I think that would be a real nice setting down there for, for that to be able to happen. Um, so now that's easy for me to say and it's an easy idea to come up with. But you know, in talking to a couple of folks from, from Newport, there's a lot of work involved. I have spoken to um, Valerie Galvin, myself were on the uh, comp plan committee. And I couldn't think of a better person to at least start reaching out to and ask her if she was interested. And she was. So, but you know, I think the first step is, is, is the council interested in exploring something like this, number one? And if we are, uh, Sean, we need to figure out from Newport. I know you sent this something here today um, about uh, the steps that we would need to take and we would have to do of like we'd normally do anything uh, uh, once, if this thing starts to take shape, some type of fiscal impact statement on what the cost would be um, for the town. I know the cost carries a, a lot of the vendors, uh, a lot of the business owners carry the cost down in Newport. Um, but there's things like bands and um, entertainment, that kind of stuff where that would have to be paid for. So um, Mike, did you want to contribute? That's okay. We're foremost this evening.
Apparently.
Yes.
Mike Flynn, 34 Warren Ave, Middletown. Um, I just wanted to let you know, I'm the president of the Eastern Point Association. We have 150 plus members. I think it would be a great idea for us to take that pulse and see if the people that live in the area think it's a good idea. I personally think it's a great idea. I can see trouble with traffic flow for those uh, few hours. Maybe Wave Ave would have to be the path if you did it right in the middle. But I'd be happy to um, to pulse the membership and see if we can help in any way.
Sure. Any feedback would help, Mike. I just thought that uh, with discussing with, with Peter and Tom was that one, parking, we have the beach right down the street. So we could, we could, we have the school up the street. Um, the way Newport did it, they put out signs a couple of days or a, a week in advance saying, hey, this street's gonna be blocked off from here to here from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Um, but I think, I couldn't think of a better place to, to, to have it. And I think you'd probably have to close off Wave Avenue would be my guess because there's businesses there as well. Um, so who knows? I mean, I don't know. I'm just thinking in my own mind, outside the box a little bit and seeing where this thing could go.
We did bring it up at our last meeting and the, the board did seem to favor the idea, just so you know. It's not like we're opposed. I just think we should talk about it and get some feedback from them.
Okay.
Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you. So I think uh, Sean, any ideas, the next step, uh, maybe uh?
So I, I think just my, my one question, so Newport's fair is basically run by, or coordinated by Newport this week and the Merchants Association. So you're talking about the town taking on those roles?
I think uh, we need to figure out somebody to, maybe it's, I don't know if it's economic development. I don't know who it is. Maybe we create a committee to do it. I'm not sure. Not that we need another committee because we need a committee to manage all the committees we already have, but I think it's, I think it's important that uh, maybe that's the route we take. And we'd have to kind of offset it from when Newport does it, you know?
So that's my question. So you're suggesting the town would do it and it wouldn't be done like Newport's where it's done by the business?
I'm not, I don't know. It's all new. So that's something we need to discuss and kind of decide as a group of uh, maybe we, maybe we get those business owners in here. Um, invite them to a workshop and try and figure this, if there's any interest and try and figure this thing out.
Yeah, if, if this is.
Then that, that'd be the next really right step.
Okay. Um, if the council wants me to work on that, that's fine.
Okay. What's uh, what's the pleasure here?
Will you put it on?
What's that?
You, Tom.
Yeah.
And Peter.
Yep.
Maybe you guys just come back a little bit and with some ideas on what you want to do there?
Well, I want to make sure that the business owners have to, are, are want to be involved in this first.
Sure.
There's no sense of doing it if, if they don't want, want to be involved or disrupted. I think, I couldn't see why they wouldn't want to be. But you know, I'm not a business owner, so I'm not, I don't know. So I think that's uh, maybe that's the next step. We invite them in and just set, set a date. Wendy, if we could set a date for um, a workshop, then we could uh, and I don't know how long this will take. But um, you know, we could, I mean, I was thinking, you know, Newport has, does theirs. I think we could do one here. I think we could put in the little Middletown twist on it in the form of, you know, um, you know, maybe we have a little tractor parade at the end because we're a bunch of farmers out here. Who knows? I mean, we could do it differently. Think about it. You know, that'd be kind of cool. We got the Bird Sanctuary guys that go there with their tractors and we could do all kinds of different stuff. I think it'd be, who knows? Maybe we do hay rides for the families and kids. I don't know. I think it'd be, it could be a pretty cool event. So. And maybe it gets extended up to, to Johnny's. I don't know. You know, maybe it goes that way. So I think it'd be pretty fun to do. Uh, but again, it's a lot of work involved, I'm sure. And again, we need a fiscal impact statement. So if we could work on setting a date that we're getting the business owners in to, to invite them? Yes. Okay. Everybody good with that? Charlie, you okay with this?
I, I, so I'll, I'll say a few thanks. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'm all for promoting businesses in the area and I think this is a great idea. I do. Um, I, I think there's so many projects going on down there right now that we're talking about. And you know, we didn't fund the TIF this last budget season and like, so to me, like, I, I feel like if we're gonna go all in on that area, let's go all in in that area. Let's improve the area too. Like there's, there's some businesses down there going through some um, transformations right now, but I a hundred percent in, in behind things like this. I think it's a great thing to look at. I really do. I'm just wondering if the amount of project, I mean, we have outstanding money out there right now where we're looking at lowering the utility pools down there. We got streetscape stuff going on down there. And um, and I would like to hear, I guess, from Eastern Point Association and, and the Atlantic Beach District, everybody, all the businesses down there. I'd like to see that feedback from them for sure.
Sure. Okay, that sounds good. Maybe they can come to that meeting too, once we set that date and we can also invite the Economic Development Committee too. I think that's important. So, okay. I appreciate the support. All right, let's move on to number 16, memorandum of council, memorandum of Council Toronto in reference to Newport Water Meter Meeting.
Motion to receive said memorandum.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Dennis.
Thank you, Paul. Um, I had put this on several times uh, to see if we could just get Newport Water to come in and, and update us on, you know, projects that they've, they're undergoing at this time and you know, something I'd like to start seeing a little bit more of is future forecasting of our budgets and also understanding, you know, what the infrastructure looks like, you know, that Newport Water is looking to do today. Two years from now, three years from now. Um, they have, they have projects that are 10 years out. And so I just think it's important that they would come and meet with us as a council and just help educate us on where they're at today and where they're going. So we can understand what the impact's gonna be to our residents. Our residents can come and ask questions as well. So I did reach out to uh, Robert Schultz Jr., who is the Director of Utility. And he said he'd be happy to come speak with the council. And so just, I went on their, their site, just some of the things that they have right now, lead and drinking water. At this point, it's a big project they have in regards to the, the replacing lead pipes, you know, on a quinic island. Um, got other capital program stability of Eastern's Pond. It's a big project that's going on down there where they're concerned about the drinking water on the pond side. Especially with all the renovations that Newport's looking to do down there and in that district. So I just think it's important and you know, I'd be, I'm interested in them coming in and speaking with us and giving us a little bit of a roadmap. When I talked with him, he was very uh, willing to come in and speak with us. So it, I want to leave it up to the council. If they think that would be something they're interested in, great. If not, I understand.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the council?
Oh, why not?
Peter, Chris?
Yes.
Okay. So uh, if we could coordinate that, uh, Dennis, do you want to handle that or you want to get with Wendy on that or?
It should go through the city manager.
City man, okay. All right. City man, okay. All right. That's why he's the administrator. Okay. All right. So let's get that done. Let's move on to Number, um, Seventeen, Memorandum of Council Toronto in reference to Middletown Five Year Budget Forecast Review Workshop.
Motion to receive said memorandum. Second.
Motion to second to receive. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you, Paul. Um, the last meeting, we received a five-year forecast. It's a document that we have to provide to the state. Um, and our town administrator and team filed this with the state. And it's really a great, a good document. I appreciate them putting it together. Um, and actually from a high level standpoint, it actually goes through and estimates what we're looking at our levy to be over the next five years and then what the estimated mill rates will be slash tax rates. And it's at a high level. And, um, so what I was hoping, um, is that we could have a, have a workshop and look into the, you know, dissect this document a little bit more in regards to what is included down to the detail level that's making up the actual forecast at this time. It looks like, you know, between twenty-six and twenty-seven, it's three point seven seven percent. Twenty-eight, it's three percent. Twenty-nine, it's three point six four percent. And in thirty, it's two point nine four percent. So those are the percentage increases in the levy over the next five years. And I'd like to do some one-off analysis. Like if we want to try to keep it at a certain level, what would, what, what would it look like? We used to do this with the, the schools all the time. If we give you four percent, what would it look like? If we give you three, two, what would it look like? And let's try to dissect this so that we can hopefully get it. I'd like to see it get down to a two percent rate and see how we can maybe manage the, the capital improvement program we have or, you know, we know what's coming our way. So, you know, we have a capital improvement booklet here that stretches out to twenty thirty. So you want to see what's in, what, what's in here compared to what's in here and just kind of do a workshop. In the end, it might just be exactly what it is, but at least it gives us a chance to maybe dig in a little bit more. Look at the budget itself. Obviously, this year's budget, planning's coming up. We probably can see, can define that pretty quickly. You know, what, what's going to happen this year? Five years is a kind of a long ways to look out, but at least we can make some assumptions, speculate a little bit and get a feel for what, what the roadmap looks like for the next five years. So people can have more predictability of their taxes, a little bit more transparency. So I'd just like to propose a workshop where we can dig into the five-year plan as well as, you know, look at this year's budget.
Okay.
And excuse me, Paul, what's one more thing? And I, I think Sean's already on the, you know, he's, he's ahead of the curve on this because he has submitted documents out to his, his team saying, you know, hey, take a look at your, take a look at your budgets. And, you know, we want to come in and, and it's going to be a tough budget. So let's see if we can get it somewhere between the three and two percent. So Sean's already on it, started working on this.
Okay. Um, any councils have any questions or concerns or ideas about this workshop? Would, do you want to, are you in favor of having a workshop?
Yes.
I, I was thinking more of we incorporate this into our budget workshop. That's what I'm thinking. Because that's real to the time with, with, when we have actuals, we can say, we can then propose like we used to do. Hey, what if, if we gave you two percent? What if we give you three percent? What if you get one percent? I think that's a better, better timing of, of the budget season.
I do.
Unless somebody sees it differently. I'm fine with that. That's just my opinion. I have no problem covering that. I just think the timing of it needs to be during the budget season. Which is coming up here shortly.
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes.
Question on that. Would that confuse issue? Sorry. That confuse issues? I mean, we're developing a budget versus just going over a, a long-term budget. But that?
It may. That's a good point. It may.
So I, I mean, I think it's worth sitting down and having a meeting, bringing the public in if they want to come in and take a look at it. I don't know what it's going to change, but maybe it opens eyes and let peoples know that maybe some things they may not know.
Dennis, you okay with this after the first of the year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. All right. You in favor of this?
Okay.
That's what we'll do. We'll schedule a, uh, five-year budget workshop, uh, for sometime after the first of the year. Okay? Excellent.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Number Eighteen, Memorandum of Council Toronto in reference to Cottington's Holiday Hope fundraiser.
Motion to receive said memorandum.
Second.
Motion to second to receive. All in favor? Aye. Dennis.
Okay, um, I put this on the docket. I received an email, um, from Heidi at Cottington, um, Holiday Hope fundraiser. And she was reaching out to make us aware of the things that they've done in the past and that they're currently, uh, Heidi Christie from Cottington Brewery, her husband Billy Christie, herself owner and operate Cottington. And they've been giving out to the community and supporting young folks and helping them through the holiday seasons. So I said, hey, you know, I'd like to help with this. Uh, as a counselor, I do not take any pay for being up here. I just tell them, you know, everyone gets a little bit of, a very small stipend up here. And so I've always, each year gave back, gave it back to the community or gave it back to the town. And this year I asked to actually take that money and donate it towards this event. And when I ran it up the flagpole, I was told that I needed to go on the docket to get permission from the council to allocate those funds to this fundraiser.
Okay. How does that work?
So it's administrative. So as Counselor Toronto said, he doesn't receive compensation. So it's actually an appropriation from the town council's discretionary fund to.
Denied.
But that's, so it's, that's why it's on the docket. Procedurally, it, it's a, it's an appropriation from the town council.
So are you looking at doing it your whole stipend or your quarterly stipend?
Good question. I did put a call out to them to see how many children they still need to, to fund.
Seventeen. I was eating dinner there last night and I had a long conversation with Heidi.
Yeah.
And it's, uh, seven, she's there up to seventeen. That number could grow. Um, sometimes they get a, a two or three, sometimes one at the last minute, but it could grow. So I didn't know if it was.
Sure. How much? No, yearly.
Yearly?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So we would need a motion to do that?
What's the, what's the value?
Twenty-five hundred.
Second.
Okay.
Can't do any better than that.
No, you're, you're honor.
I know my limits.
You're doing a good job tonight, Chris. Any further discussion?
So, oh yeah. Um, so if we, like in the future, like next year, I didn't realize we could actually do that, not take pay.
Yeah.
Not that it's a lot of money, but like, you know, um, so that's something that has to come on the council? Like we have to do the same thing?
So ideally you would take your pay, pay your taxes on your pay and then make a contribution. If you're not taking your pay, then it would, the dollar amount would come out of the, it would be a donation from the town to.
Comes out of that line item that funds our pay.
Reviewing it with Mark and Patrick. Yes, it should come out of that line item.
That's where it should come out. Right. Okay.
Because it, because there's no, because you're not paying any compensation.
Yeah, we've never done this before. So it's uncharted waters.
Yeah, yeah.
We're going to make sure we're doing it the right.
It's just, it's just accounting.
Yeah.
And knowing the Christie's too, I mean, I think, you know, whatever's left over will be used next year and maybe it expands. I mean, this, this goes towards, you know, that this should tell people that there's seventeen kids in our school district that are in, in severe need here. Um, some cases can be considered homeless. So.
Yes.
You know, I, and then in the, at one point, I think on the building committee, we had, we were given a number of, there's over a hundred students in our school district that could fall into the same category. So excellent, uh, I think effort by a local business. And, uh, thank you, Dennis, for, for doing this too. I know I'm going to make some donations of time and money myself and, and it's a great cause. So thank you.
Yeah. So last year, it is a great cause. So last year I just happened to be there with Diana and, uh, you know, Heidi came up to me and started talking to me about this and said, you know, this is what I'm doing, you know, would you donate? So ran down to Walmart, bought all kinds of toiletries and gloves and hats and deodorant and razors and stuff like that. Because those kids need those kind of things. And, uh, she was very grateful. So that's the kind of stuff that goes towards actual needs of, of, of kids that, and these are, these are, these are kids ninth grade through twelfth grade. That's, that's the, so if anybody wants to donate to this, feel free to contact Heidi. Thank you, Don. So, um, um, don't, it's like an auction. Don't raise your hand. Don't nod because you just, you just committed. Okay. Um, haven't, haven't said that. Um, uh, we have a motion to second. Uh, all in favor? Aye. Anybody oppose? It's a real nice gesture, Dennis. Thank you. Nineteen, and our last item is, uh, discussion of scheduling a workshop between Middletown Town Council, Newport City Council in reference to regionalization. The entire city council is available on Monday, December eighth, twenty twenty-five, five thirty PM. The meeting will be held at, at the Wyndham, um, um, two forty Aquinic Avenue, um, Middletown, Rhode Island. So is everyone available that day?
I can't make.
You can't make it. Okay. Anybody else? You're good? Dennis, can you make it? Mrs. Vaughn, Charlie?
Yes.
Tom's not here, so I can't ask him, but I will ask him. What's that?
You have a form this one, so.
Oh, we do. Okay.
Make the motion. Then we can have.
Okay. Make the motion. We'll have Mr. Viveras come up in a sec.
Motion to begin said discussion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Viveras.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anthony Viveras, forty-five, Bayview Park. Uh, I did buy the council with, uh, copy of Title sixteen, Education. And, uh, number two, a regional school district has, uh, can sue or be sued the same as a, a town can. Uh, but, and also make you aware of, uh, number three, three-one, about acquiring by purchase gifts or other means of transfer or by con- condone, or by condemnation, which is taking it by eminent domain. But I want to talk about regionalization proposal. Couple of years ago, we proposed regionalizing with Newport. And I don't know how many thousands of dollars we spent, but that failed. And then, Mr. President, you brought it up again.
Yep.
And the school committee voted four, zero, with one upstition not to move forward. And he, uh, again, bringing it up. And that leads me to a question of if you take a school district that ranks twentieth in the state and merge it with a school district that ranks forty-ninth in the state, how does that benefit the students in the district that ranks twenty? Now, if you're going the other way towards Portsmouth, they rank five, maybe. But to take our schools and re, and join them with Newport, where I was ranked twenty in the state and there is forty-nine, it just, to me, it doesn't make educational sense. So I'm going to ask that, that whole proposal be, uh, scrapped or at least put on hold so we can take a better look at it. And the counselors can, I want to check my proposals fine, but that's what I've looked up. Twenty to forty-nine. So I'm going to ask the council to sort of put it on the back burner at least. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Do we have anybody else? Oh. Okay. Um, Charlie?
Let's say something. Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, um, everybody. I, you know, I think there's some confusion on what we're trying, at least what I'm trying to do here with my support of just talking to Newport. That's all I'm trying to do. There's so many questions out there that, and, and that's always comes up as a reason why we should never do this. We'd still have these outstanding questions because we've never answered those questions. And the only way to answer those questions is to sit down in a public forum with Newport. We're not making the decisions. My opinion, we should, town council shouldn't be making a decision. You, the voters, should make this decision. But we have to get, you know, one thing we've learned about the last time, we, it was, did pass in Middletown by a very, I would say, significant amount, very narrowly lost in Newport. Um, and things have changed since then, but it, we can't answer the questions that, that, that the voters are asking us without sitting down. And that's, that's all we're doing. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Charlie. Yeah, I agree. I mean, we, we need to have a discussion and see where it goes. Um, you know, I think, uh, there's a lot of benefits to it. Um, you know, educationally and financially for the town and for the city. So, and I also look at it as, you know, the, the word that comes to my mind is always is sustainability. Our, what we doing today is that sustainable, whether it's educationally or, or financially. And I don't think it is. Certainly not financially because the, 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 the position we find ourselves in with the buildings today, who's ever running, um, this community in twenty, thirty, forty years down the road are going to be facing the same things we're facing today because there's just not enough money to put into these buildings. And if you do it together, just the transportation costs alone, the state pays half of your transportation costs. Between Middletown and Newport right now, that's, it's about three and a half, four million dollars a year. Imagine that three and a half more, four million dollars a year saying, hey, we're going to restrict this to, to the funding of these buildings, maintenance of these buildings in the future. So it'll end up like we ended up today. And nobody's fault. I mean, it's not why we put money in the buildings. You just can't sustain it. So think about that in ten years. That's thirty-five or forty million dollars. What community can come up with thirty-five or forty million dollars to put in their buildings? They can't. So just that little thing alone and Mr. Viveras, you and I have gone, had a lot of discussions about this and I respect your opinion. And I don't agree with it and you certainly don't agree with mine and that's okay. But that's how we get things done. We talk about things, we figure them out. So. Uh, I'm all in favor of having a discussion. So you guys good on the eighth? Okay. So we have a motion to second to, uh, to begin the discussion. Do we have, uh, all in favor? Aye. Wendy, you will get back to Newport and let them know. Okay. We're waiting for the three favorite words from Mr. Walker.
Regen.
Motion to regen. All in favor? Aye. Thank you, everyone.